Showing up tonight. Um, is there... Before we go any further, let me... Is there any additions to the agenda tonight? I understand George, you can also entertain a motion.
Short report.
For listers? I'll make a motion that we approve under new business, a lister's report.
Alright.
Craig, did you have something?
I did.
Alright, hold on a second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Abiding the listers? Yes, you seconded.
Yeah, I seconded, yeah. I thought you were gonna call anyone.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Okay. Then Mr. Knapp, I think, has got something.
Concern regarding adjacent property. Which I brought up to the listers last week.
Do you want to do that while George is here?
Sure.
I don't have to do that, sure.
Okay, so we'll do that with... We... I don't think we need to add that, we'll just make it a part of the listers thing.
Conversation.
Yep, okay.
And, um, I'm looking to go into executive session at the end of the meeting on personnel issue. So is there...
Do it at the very end?
Very end, yes.
Okay.
Is there a motion to...
Make a motion that we add an executive session regarding personnel at the very end of our meeting.
There a second for discussion?
Again, okay, go ahead, Rick.
All of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright. Before we get to the hearing, I'm gonna go, um, let's approve the minutes. So, has anyone looked at those minutes?
Okay.
Janet, you didn't send those, did you?
Sorry about that.
Give us a minute, buddy. Please.
Um, Janet, you refer to it as the L-E-M-P, but isn't it the L-E-O-P? Isn't that...
Operations?
Local Emergency Operations Plan? I think.
Sorry, I... Maybe. I thought it was Local Emergency Management Plan.
I could be wrong on that, I think it's L-E-O-P.
I think it is L-E-O-P.
Okay, that's fine.
I believe.
Yeah, I think so. Mention several times.
I think with that correction, which it does appear several times in the first, uh, section four, I'll make a motion that we approve with that correction.
Second to that?
I'll second.
Does anyone see anything else in here? Not all of them in favor then? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Uh, just show me, uh, I was not here that day, so I will abstain.
Alright, you got three minutes, three votes anyway. Um, shoot back to the hearing. Uh, they'll take me over to road maintenance for Sunny Hill Drive and Sherry Lane. Are there any folks who want to make any comments that live up there?
Hearing nothing, I would make the motion that we officially approve the adoption of Sunny Hill Drive and Sherry Lane as town highways.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
The only, the only thing I would ask Mr. Chairman, and I believe this has been answered by him, I'm gonna be sure, we do have a map drawing of the underground utilities.
Uh, that's right on the...
Right on the...
Better than...
Okay.
...map that we had it. And it does have, uh, the footage as well, and all that stuff. Um, George, just as a side note, you've been, you know, a lot of the folks come down, talk to you, any issues up there on Sunny Hill?
No, I mean, not that, uh, there was a comment or two in passing, but nothing of any consequence.
Okay. Poor Sherry Lane. Okay. Alright then, there's been a motion made, take that road over, all of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we have a copy of what's going on in town with regard to big bucks. Anybody wants to come up here and check it out? Have a copy here. Um, any public comments? Alright, um, hearing done. Would you like to give us an update regarding Steve Bernard, Sheriff Bernard, and some of the information that you just brought, the contract down here and stuff?
Well, yeah, the new contract is for the up to thirty hour a week, um, contract, starting July 1st. Um, we are looking at, as you, as Steve mentioned to you, maybe some very weekly hours as far as coverage. One week may be a little more than, the second week may be a little, little bit less. We're actually looking at possibly, when we have decided, maybe doing a twelve hour day, um, using two people. So, can, you would have seven days a week coverage doing it that way. It may only be like five hours a day, but it would be seven days a week, um, if we use two people in a twelve hour rotation to cover, um, cover the hours. The only question I had was on, I know they, you were looking for ten hours of dedicated speed enforcement. Are you looking for that all in a block, or are you looking at spread out over the duration of the week as far as if we end up doing a five day week or a seven day week? You know, two hours here, an hour there, or something to, to, uh, throughout the week versus, you know, one set or two set days doing five hours of each day or ten hours a day?
For me, it would be able, I could justify it to folks that would give me a call by saying, you know, dedicated parts are coming in different days, because we don't know, I mean, if you say, okay, we're gonna do it on the weekend for ten hours.
Right.
So, I think that, for me, it's better to be a little flexible.
Spread it out.
Yeah, on the, on the SARS reporting, and I, I don't know if you, if you utilize that, um, access on our website, but we are gonna have started to have the guys block out when they do speed enforcement. So, if they're, if they do speed enforcement on Middle Road, it'll say speed enforcement from one o'clock till one, two thirty, or whatever the timeframe may be, and then they can put in there how many cars they stopped or contacted in that timeframe. So, to make it a little simpler for people to understand, and you can actually see what the progression is as far as, um, you know, how we're doing with speed enforcement, and if it's affecting an area, if it's not affecting the area. We're also open to if, you know, the road crews out and they're seeing an issue on a road, you know, give us a call, and we'll try to beef up some patrols in those areas to, you know, they're out, they're out and about on different spots than we are, so, and they're gonna see traffic as well. So, they'll, they'll know if it's...
I know this happens from time to time, but I would appreciate, um, when the deputy is in the area, when he first comes into the area, if the town hall is open during that particular session, that he could just stop in and ask Gloria if there's any, been any...
Yeah, I thought they were pretty good about doing that, but maybe it's kind of gotten off track a little bit.
No, 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 but I mean, on, ongoing basis.
Okay.
So, that would be one of the requests, I think. Um, does anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I think, spreading it out and, um, that, that to me makes the most sense.
Absolutely, uh, 'cause if you do it in one block, people are gonna get used to when they're gonna be there.
Right, right, yeah.
You don't want that.
Okay, there's number seven in this, it says, blank, shall serve as administrator of this agreement for the town and will act as a liaison. Now, that's...
Been, you have been, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that I want you to put your name in there.
Sure.
Put this contract in there.
Yeah, I'll be willing to have my name in there.
Um, is there any other concerns, Bob?
The number, number matches the budget, right? We checked that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the updated sheriff contract with Rick Wilber serving as administrator and liaison between the sheriff's department and the town of Clarendon.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All members have to sign this, all board members have to sign this. Okay, is there any questions from the public before we go on with this? Yes?
Another question, just a comment, it's a thanks for the service you guys are doing. You know, in my mind, the most important thing is the visibility.
Mm-hmm.
And so, thank you.
Okay. It's answered.
Okay. Alright then, uh, there's been a motion made, seconded, all of them in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Looks like we have to lose four members.
You can't oppose something the voters voted on.
You can, but it won't be very long.
Won't go very well for you, you're not gonna oppose something the voters voted on.
Especially if it's an election year.
Yeah. Oh. Out here, just pass that up to Rick too.
Sure.
Uh, is there anything else under highway?
Um, yeah, just one second. Let me finish signing my name.
We'll have to get the date on that, Rick.
Um, Cash is under the weather, but he did leave me a couple things to, um, report. Um, apparently, the covered bridge, uh, is starting to be addressed. Remember that?
Mm-hmm.
We had issues, uh, on the underside that needed to be addressed. Um, so that has started. Um, I'm not sure if Janet, he says you could add more potentially to that, but just that it started.
It started, and there is a, a plan that they're gonna walk through. So, it's, yeah, it's more than just started.
Okay. Um, he met with V-Trans, um, the town did not get a paving grant for 2020. Um, of the thirty-one towns in District Three, um, eight towns were approved and accepted for paving grants, and...
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, we can come back here. Cause Cash got to sign it, right?
And the vast majority, uh...
Well, yeah, if you want him to sign it. Uh, he's not here, legally, then.
Yeah.
If you wanna wait and have Rick bring it in if we see him, or I can take it the way it is, it doesn't, either way.
If you want to decide, you can.
Yeah.
Didn't it say we all had signed it?
Well, the thing is, he's here right now. Majority of the board signed it.
Yeah.
And so, Janet, can you make the copy of this, and then you can take it?
Um, just finished that, so, eight towns were accepted for paving grants out of, apparently, a majority of those thirty-one towns did turn in grant applications, um, but the money was used up after eight had been awarded. So, um, basically, better luck next, next year.
That's what he said.
That's what, pretty much the verdict was, so...
He, uh, I think, part of that conversation that I sat in on, he did stress to us that get the applications in on time.
Okay.
Alright, thank you very much. I'm sure I'll sit with me, I'm probably gonna head home and spend the long one, so. You got any questions or anything?
I don't have any.
Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Thank you.
Take care.
Um, and that's all Cash gave us.
What were you saying, Mike?
What?
Were you saying something, and then you stopped in the middle of it?
You met down here, you said you met down here.
No, when I, when, when I was here, I did not stop in the middle, I was done saying what I was, had to say. But the thing was, to repeat, is, um, that he said that it's responsibility of the town. Now, I think Heidi can verify this, he did say that, um, Clarendon is a, you know, favorable kind of town for grants and stuff like this. So, he said the problem is, we didn't get it in on time, and that was the issue. So, next year, that's what you're saying, am I correct?
Yes.
Alright. Um, is there any questions under highway that we can get back to Cash? Anybody have some concerns?
You guys gonna open the paving bids tonight?
I don't think that was...
He didn't say anything to me about it on the phone.
No, really?
How many bids did we have?
I have two, he's got a meeting.
I left one today with the town clerk per instruction.
She did bring it over to me.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I assumed you guys were opening them tonight at the meeting, that's why I'm sitting here patiently waiting. If it's another time, then so be it, but I just wanted to ask.
Well, then, what we can do is have a, uh...
Let me get him on the phone and see what he...
What the end...
He did say he would answer the phone, so, let me see.
So, I'll meet away, I just was...
There was no date for that, those bids to be in, was there?
More, more would on the agenda first night, I'm not sure what's going to be for that.
Yeah.
Nope.
Maybe he just anticipated putting in the agenda if he was here or something, he probably, I don't know, but...
What we can do, once we get the, I'd like to, we always like to have at least three bids.
He didn't answer.
Alright, so he may not be doing it.
Okay.
If there's a special meeting or something, we will contact all those folks that, otherwise, I suspect, um, it won't be until our next meeting.
Two, two weeks from now, probably.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Maybe, maybe they're waiting on another one, I'm not sure, but I, I just thought they were due for tonight's meeting, that was my interpretation, so...
Was it, was it posted in the paper, or did he just call people?
No, he just called me.
He called, okay.
Actually, he brought over some information and...
Okay.
...stories and footages and a whole nine yards, I had a bid package.
But like I said, if he's not, uh, if we can't get a third bid, then we'll either react by having a special meeting just for that purpose.
Yep.
Or we'll have a, uh, we'll time it for our next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause he talked, he talked to me on the phone, and he didn't say anything, he didn't leave anything on this for me either. I don't know.
No problem, thanks, have a good night, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Well, the problem is, we didn't, we didn't handle it, the road commissioner handled it, and he's not here, so... We were not the ones that formally put it out to bid.
No. Right, the slipper did not put it out for bid, per se.
But that's under the road commissioner's purview, so, without him here, we can't do anything about it.
But we can certainly have a special meeting to open up bids.
Maybe.
If needed.
If needed. Uh, old business, is there anything else under old business? George, new business?
Yes, thank you. Uh, I guess, almost good news, is that we're almost done with the reappraisal. We had, uh, forty folks come in when they had the pre-grivance hearings, it was three days, it was very busy days, uh, the week before last. And of the forty, we had nineteen that, uh, filed a grievance. And of the nineteen, there were a few changes, weren't very significant changes. And they, today, they were mailed the results of their grievance hearings. And then they have fourteen days if they wish to petition to have a hearing before the Board of Civil...
But I was gonna say, BCA's next, right? Okay.
During the BCA meeting, John Tiffany of Nimmerich will be here to, uh, work with the listers in terms of advising the BCA of our viewpoint.
Okay.
And I did go out with, uh, the folks collecting the data several times. Uh, I also went out with the head guy of the organization. We went to the park, the mobile park up here by Mike's Country Store, and, uh, went through every one of those mobile homes in terms of checking the facts that were taken on it, the data that was taken on it. And then, through the sales analysis that occurred over the last three years, we adjusted the prices of those mobile homes mostly downward. There, a lot of them are in fairly tough shape. Uh, the other thing of interest would be that, uh, during these six days that we had the preliminary hearings and the grievances, we had some incredible help from a member of the organization here in Town Hall. And I'd like to give a round of applause to our treasurer, who took notes for us those six days.
Yay! Thank you very much.
Bit of clock flower.
So, that's all I have, unless there's questions.
Um, I have some questions.
Certainly.
Um, how many folks do you oppose are going to vote at BCA?
Well, one of the interesting things that happened, there was five people that didn't want to come to the information or pre-hearings. They wanted to go right to grievance, which was fine, they did. And I suspect that some of those folks will show up, because they had some pretty significant opinions, I guess I'll put it that way, that, uh, I'm not sure that we were able to change anything enough to make them happy. I probably shouldn't tell you any of those.
Short, short version is, you'll know in fourteen days.
Yes.
Or sooner.
Yeah.
We can certainly, as they come in, let you folks know.
Yeah, sure.
I appreciate that, too.
And as I said, John Tiffany, which some of you guys met, because he was here for quite a few times, or any days, will be here to work with the listers in terms of giving you the information and why the decisions were made that were made. And then it'll be up to you guys to decide what you wanna do.
And a little question for George.
I think so.
Mister Knapp. What's up?
Alright. Um, well, we had a discussion, we, we're one of the folks that, uh, came in for the pre, uh, appeal, and also the grievance for the listers. And, uh, during that discussion, uh, we, my wife and I pointed out that we have had concerns for quite some time about, uh, an adjacent property to our east, which I was under the impression was owned by a gentleman by the name of Tom Pritchard, who you may know, he's an excavator. When I looked in the appraisal book, his name didn't appear, but there are a couple Pritchards in there, and the acreage, I think, matches up with one of the, a couple of the folks that are in there. How they're related, I'm not sure. But the concern is that over the last, I'm not sure when that property was purchased, it was purchased from the squires, that, um, uh, what was a pretty tranquil ten acre parcel of forest has turned into a pit, and certainly respect the right of a landowner to do with their land as they may with limitations, I think. Our concern is twofold, um, specifically with regard to that property. One, that immediately, as, if you were, George, I think you went up...
Yeah.
...and looked at it, um, at our request. Um, if you were to come into our driveway immediately to the east, that I mean, immediately to the east, there are two eighteen wheeler beds that are full of whatever. Uh, they, not every single day, but they leach, uh, something out of the bed into the ground, and the well for that house is right there, the well for our house is within a hundred and fifty feet, maybe. There's broken windows. Previously, there were commercial sewage pipe that he was able to sell, and I actually helped him to load it. Tires, it's very unseemly, I, we, we are absolutely convinced that the value of our property has decreased, um, as a consequence to that. The pit is not a small pit, it's a very large pit. There's also a wooden log building that sits there that is in a very dilapidated condition. Um, and, um, I haven't seen any fires too recently, but there were some pretty massive fires, uh, at that property within the last year, year ago, two years ago, et cetera. I have had some repeated conversations with Mr. Pritchard, friendly conversations. He's certainly never been, uh, aggressive or in any way unseemly in our discussions, and neither have I. And he's always, um, acknowledged the eyesore and the, you know, the fact that it's a problem, has stated on multiple occasions, and he desires to be a good neighbor, and, yep, I'll get it moved. And we've had that conversation, uh, not once, twice, not five times, but probably at least ten times over the last three, four years, and not a single thing has changed. So, um, I understood from our discussions last week that the, um, town is considering, uh, an ordinance to, regarding keeping property in, uh, some type of manageable condition. It was a question as to whether or not it's a health concern, I can't verify that, but it seems like it's...
I was, I was gonna ask Craig, have you, especially with the, you called it the bed or whatever, that's, that's leaching every once in a while, have you contacted the health officer at all?
Not yet.
Okay.
That's next on the list.
Yes, Mark.
Did you say there were, you had a ten acre forest in there?
No, we don't have a ten acre, we have three and a half acres.
No, 'cause the squire, I'm a squire.
Right.
And we have it, and we're gonna have to have it surveyed again, because we can't find, I mean, it costs ten thousand dollars for the squires to have that all surveyed, and stakes have been pulled. And on his, on his...
I was gonna say, so you think this law is potentially encroaching on what remains of the squire's property?
No, 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 I don't, I don't know, I do know that, uh, I'm not saying who pulled the stakes.
Sure.
But, I mean, it was a lot of money to get it done, and the stakes are no longer there. So, we're gonna have to hire and have it re-done. Um, we haven't been, had such a pleasant experience with this man as this man has. And, you know, the town, I found tires in the road, I think I called Bob on it.
Yeah, I remember that.
And the rocks came down and...
That was, that was a year or so ago, two years ago.
Yeah, there, there doesn't seem to be much regard for things. And I, I understand he doesn't live there, he just rents it.
No, he rents it out, and actually, my wife met, I mean, there have been, well, that's another issue, I mean, over the years, there seems to be a lot of traffic at night, uh, late at night. But, um, I, I don't wanna comment further on that. But, um, my wife did recently go up and visit with a young woman who apparently is renting that property at this point, and, uh, again, I can't do secondhand, but I trust my wife for fifty years. She mentioned that it was, uh, the state of the immediate property, she had concern for the fact that there was, there were small children there, and there were concerns about, um, again, health-related issues as to whether or not that property should be rented at this point in time.
George, what did you say?
Well, essentially, he, what I've, you know, again, I just had a visual look at what he was talking about, and it seemed to be, uh, he seemed to be accurate in what he was describing. But as a lister, I mean, it's not much, it's out of our, our purview.
But I just wanted to know what...
Yep.
Is, is that, um, a working pit, grapple pit? Or is it, in the past, it has been, and he just...
It's, um...
He dug a hole, and he's, and he's dumping debris in it, in the hole.
Yeah.
It's the way to get rid of stumps and construction debris, I think.
Yeah, I mean, that's close.
I know.
That's why I think we better...
Well, I just, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you just mentioned you thought it was two acres.
He only has two acres there, 'cause it was bought off my uncle Willard.
Yeah, oh, nice man, by the way.
Yes.
Oh, very nice man. But, um, yeah, the, the, the number ten acres came from my understanding and my wife's understanding, it didn't look like ten acres. it didn't look like 10 acres to me, you know, but again, I don't know the boundaries of that property.
Ninety-three acres goes right to the railroad.
No, no, I don't mean your property, I mean...
Well, nobody has 10 acres in there.
Okay.
Other than the squires is.
All right, so...
Well, I would say that the first thing is, especially with what you're talking about leaching, especially if there's oil or if there's something like that, I would say the health officer needs to check that out. Because if that's, that's why we have a health officer. So, and I, so I'll make a motion that we contact Richard and have him make a check up there and see, make sure that there's no health violations, and if they are, we need to get those addressed.
In that pit as well.
Oh, the pit, I don't know how much the health officer gonna do there.
Then, if, for instance, we're dumping stumps at the transfer station, and the state is telling us we gotta pull them out, that means, why does it...
Looking at shingles.
Yeah, I don't think it's limited to stumps.
No, it's building.
So I guess, so I'll do that, that motion, and then we can do another motion. So I've got, I've got that motion made.
Okay, I'll second Robert's motion.
Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Then I'll make a motion that we also contact the zoning administrator and have him check on the status of the property and if there are any zoning violations occurring.
Is there a second for that?
And I'll also second Tommy.
Any further discussion? All right, hearing, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So tomorrow, we have to, we can make a note there, get in touch with, okay, get in touch with both the health officer and zoning administrator, see if we can get something investigated. All right? Anything else? George, you?
Just see if Art wants to add anything. Art, I gave a brief report on the end result of the reappraisal in terms of the number of people and all that sort of thing. Is there anything you wanted to add?
No. Okay. Is there, Heidi, would you like to give us the report, the treasurer?
I've presented you with the budget status report to date, which will go through today this afternoon. I've also given you the formal audit report that has been submitted to us by Sullivan Powers. I do have extra copies if anybody would like, from the public would like to copy. They are first come, first served, as we have limited amounts of those, but there will be one on file with the town clerk, so if anybody wants to look it over here in the office, they're more than welcome to do so. In the back of the board's copies are the letters to management, which are specifically for management, so those are for you there in formal form as well. And then, I think the last thing I have is I put in front of Mike the annual financial management questionnaire that towns and cities are required to fill out by statute, and treasurers are supposed to fill out every year annually, and then have the board sign off on it. Yep, exactly what it is. Basically, just goes through, looking at checks and balances and making sure that we're doing what we need to be doing, and so that we can then add this into our minutes that get scanned into our book there in the vault as recorded as this, this is what we're doing. So...
So we have signed off on this?
One person.
Yep.
It's the select board chair, probably. So is there a, well, let me pass this down so you guys can look at it, and then we'll...
Yep, absolutely. And I think that is all I have for you.
Well, Gloria, would you like to give a report? Town office's report?
Actually, today was the last day for dog registrations, and I got, I'd say pretty much all of them that were delinquent by today. Today I had 12 of them alone.
Wow.
It was the last day.
So not a lot of people are gonna get chased, then, you don't think?
Nope.
Okay. Wow.
Good job.
Yep.
Now, did the sheriffs get involved with any of those?
Not yet, no.
Well, that's been passed around. Janet, do you have anything you wanna bring up?
I'm good with that, thank you.
I know Bob's looking at it, but I'll make a motion that the select board chairman sign the annual, what's it called, financial survey by the town.
Is there a second?
Oh, nice.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
George? All right, Heidi, I just want to make sure you get that. Um...
I have a proposal from Holden Memorial regarding the two stones that Robert mentioned earlier in the year. Sorry it took so long to get it, Robert.
Oh, these right here?
I come down yesterday morning, I met Sean down here, and we kind of went over things a little bit.
Report the cost.
One of them is kinda easy, except for the fact that there's some parts missing at the top. And he says the best thing to do is just put up what you got. We found one broken part that goes to the rest of it, but it's not there. And he said it'd be almost impossible to ever do anything beyond that. And the other one that's on the uneven foundation, he started out, he wanted to take and lift it right off and pour foundations on, but I told him we didn't have an awful lot of money to deal with. So he says he can shim it up and bring it back up, he boxed the top back on, but he says every few years, you will have to maybe level it just a little bit.
Are there any perpetual funds for this one? So we've already spent the budget. So we're gonna have to do it July, have to look at it July, after July 1st.
Yep. Well, that's why I told him we wouldn't be able to do nothing, at least till the next fiscal year.
Yeah, because I was gonna say we've spent.
But he said it would probably be later in the year before he could get to it.
What's the cost?
The cost on, on the one that is just gonna level up and put the top up at 350, and the one that needs the other stuff put back together is 460. So you got a total of 460, 760, 8, 810, I believe it is.
That's not too bad.
I mean, if the board so wishes, you can use your contingency money.
810.
It's due until later on this year, anyway.
Yeah, it'd be, he said, he said he'd have it done before the end of the year, is the way he put it to me.
Before the fall.
Yeah, he's got quite a lot of work right now.
So you want to make a motion on that, Bob?
Well, my only thought is, do we want another proposal, or do we want to go with that one?
Who else is there around?
The only other one is Bulker, that I know of.
Gouetts doesn't do any fixing like that?
Who?
Over West Rutland Gouetts.
At least two run.
I don't think Gouetts do much of that now.
They don't do repair.
I don't think so, I'm not sure. We could check and see.
I, I, I mean, if Sean can't get to it till the fall, let's do, let's take our time and do a little more research before we jump on it. It's my thought. Let's see if we can get a couple more quotes and see what they say.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, okay.
That's my thought.
Okay.
I mean, we can't, it's not gonna, it's not gonna get done and paid before July 1st, anyway.
Right.
So it's not, it's not a rush.
Are you gonna take the initiative to inquire?
I, I will call them other two, unless Cindy would maybe like to...
I was about to...
They're the cemetery people, or my wife.
Get a couple more beds?
Can we, let's give this to the cemetery committee members that are...
Yeah, that's fine.
There, and then, not to take your wife out of this, but I mean, still get back to her.
The circumstances there, yeah. Sure, go ahead.
All right, Cindy, you guys, and then when, if you get, as Robbie is requesting, a couple more.
Because this was to fix, what, the spire right here that fell over? And then there was another one that fell over, too.
Yeah, there's two of them, they're fairly close together.
It was those two? Yeah, okay.
And...
If you want, after the meeting, we can walk out there.
I, I know which ones, I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the same ones, these two right here.
No, no holding chance, though, when you're walking out.
No.
It's scary.
You gotta avoid the poison ivy out there.
But we'll get this after the meeting, and then if you guys do get a little closer, then we can include Joan, update her, too.
Speaking of cemeteries, I wasn't gonna bring it up tonight, but one of the things that I looked at, hadn't driven by West Clarendon Cemetery, Chipperton, in a long time. But I will say the cemeteries are looking good. I don't know how many people have been, I've been impressed with how they're looking. But the one thing that we might want to consider, I know we've budgeted all the money that was left, but contingency money, we may want to consider getting somebody in there with weed whacker that's got some blades on it and hacking back on the east side where Cindy brought up, a couple weeks ago, the stones are now back in the brush. And I didn't realize how far it had grown up until I drove by the other day, could see how tall the stuff is. So we may want to consider doing that and let it, at least to get those, there's like three, three stones down in there, I think, that are now back.
That's in the section by the fence.
It's, it's by the east, in the old section, down kind of over the bank on the east.
By McCormick, no, McCollum's.
McCollum's, yep. So, I mean, my, my thought is, is we might want to consider, I mean, it's probably gonna be, put somebody in there while you're gonna spend a hundred bucks or a couple hundred bucks to just, but it's gotta be somebody that's got the blade, the blade type on their weed whacker that they can hack through the stuff, so...
Can you get some information on it?
I would say cemetery committee.
Yeah.
We also have to do something about that stone, and I don't know what we're gonna do with that one.
Which one are you talking about?
The one that got sprayed paint.
Oh, the one that got vandalized, yeah. I don't, you know who I think I would talk to about that is the Voca guy. Can't think of his name right now, but he'd be the one, yeah, I think he'd be the one I'd reach out to and say, hey, wait, is there anything that'll take, safely take spray paint off of an old stone without, I mean, marble is so porous, whatever you're gonna put on there is gonna suck right up, and that's gonna be bad, but...
Might even ask Sean about it, too.
Sean, yeah, any of them might know.
Can I make a, just ask a quick question? The East Clarendon Cemetery isn't managed at all by the town, correct?
Correct.
I'm on that, and if it turns out we need somebody to do weed whacking, I'll also, if you find somebody, could you, maybe they might want to parlay a little larger job.
Cecil acquired someone last week.
He did, yes.
Yeah, he did get someone.
We just gotta be... Thank you.
That's for this year, next year, I don't know.
Well, we, I want to go into executive session, but do we want to talk about selectmen's concerns before we go into executive session, because you're going to shut down when we go into...
Yep.
So Bob, do you have any?
No, I think I'm pretty well set tonight.
All right. There's been a few folks that's called about road issues, and I think that, Joel, didn't you have some, let's say, discussion with some of the folks that live up on West Dymeth Road? So Cash is dealing with things like that. Okay. Rob, do you have anything?
I don't have anything else tonight. I'm still looking at the, getting the updated ordinances for speed, 133, 103.
Yeah.
And we did discuss, I think it was when, when we were talking about the forest on the other side, about doing some type of ordinance where no snowmobile, four-wheelers, that type of stuff. I can look at a, I'll try to take a look at what the state might have a blueprint for. I'll try to look into that. And maybe even to find out if we've got to measure these roads as far as the speed limits on 103 and 133, if there's what needed to be in that. If there's anything specific needed to be in that.
Cash did mention to me on the phone that he was talking, I thought he might have mentioned with Sheriff Bernard, about a discussion regarding the speed limits on Tier Road and even possibly Quarter Line, is that the other one, Joel?
I think so.
I think there's been some talk about potentially addressing that because, especially when our employees have been up there working, it's been very unsafe, even, even with people going at the speed limit, it's been too fast.
They're lowering the speed limit?
Yeah, that's what the conversation's been.
There's been some calls, this is one of the calls I got was from Tier Road, right on the hill by Patlin Pierces. Yeah, and UPS guy is still flying low down here and stuff, so...
Well, I would say after July 1st, we do some targeted patrols.
And our ordinances as well.
The Quarter Line Road, I think that's used as a route from south part of town into Rutland and Center Island. Quite often, I have a feeling that folks go 50 or so, I would guess. When you see the stones flying and all that, you kind of wonder.
When we were, we had a meeting up there to look at where Schoolhouse, Hill Road, and, I mean, everybody was there, there was a couple vehicles that were flying through there, I couldn't believe it. With a, you know, and there was more or less not even one lane, because there was a couple people that were in our discussion, had their vehicles parked there, and they, just get out of the way, I'm coming through.
Yeah. Thing of it is, when, after it's just graded and you have a lot of loose stones, you can be off the road pretty quick, too.
Now, if we could get back in just a second, Mr. Chairman, slipped my mind, there weren't complaints, but it's been mentioned to me a couple of times about motorcycle speeding, well, around the village, Alfricia Road, Middle Road. It's a whole...
That was another one, the Middle Road.
Summertime fun.
Yeah, coming out of the high school, with a young guy coming out of the high school there.
Of course, I'll settle down here in a few days now.
He said that they were, he was not anticipating opening paving bits tonight, so that was his update.
All right, if you guys have nothing else, I entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel issue.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Do you want to place a time limit?
Um, yeah, I guess, let's say, no later...
20 minutes, 25 minutes?
Yeah, no later, well, let's say no later than 7:15.
So 25 minutes.
25 minutes.
All right.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, 20 folks.
Good night, everyone.